I'd like to call to order the meeting for February 25th, 2025. The time is 9:32 a.m. So Clerk to the Board, can you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Malika?
Here.
Commissioner Henson?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here. So if you would please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I just need a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Now item passes five to zero. So good morning, everyone, and welcome. We're excited to start today by celebrating one of our teams here at Adams County and shining a light on important, an important recognition they recently received. Because of the hard work and dedication of the Budget and Finance Department, Adams County was awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Public Finance Reporting for the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31st, 2023. This award was issued by the Government Finance Officers Association, and that was announced earlier this month. So the Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. In complement to the certificate, the Budget and Finance Department itself was awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Award of Financial Reporting Achievement to recognize their team's extraordinary efforts. We are so deeply proud of the Budget and Finance Department. I see Nancy in the audience. The team puts in long hours behind the scenes to make sure everything in our county keeps running smoothly, and this award is recognition all of that work, including diligence and commitment to financial responsibility. Let's give them all a round of applause. And with that, I'd like to invite Nancy Duncan, the Director of Budget and Finance, to come to the podium to speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Nancy Duncan, Budget and Finance Director, and I'd like to thank you for acknowledging the accounting team for the certification for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. This certification is the highest form of recognition for excellence in state and local government and governmental accounting and financial reporting. Its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The award stresses practical documented financials and promotes improved public finance. And I'd like to recognize the following team members. Kevin Campbell, and if you all would stand as I call your name. Kevin Campbell, Accounting Manager. Laura Garcia, Accounting Manager. Nick Bestin, the Human Services Accounting Manager. Jennifer Aswood, Accountant. Dominique DeAngelo, Accountant. Jill Donahue, Accountant. Dorian McPherson, Accountant. And Marie Sternberg, Accounting Supervisor. Along with Sky Thomas, who isn't here. This team's, this team is amazing. They've seen a lot in the time they've been here. They're a relatively young team as far as how long they've been at the county. I do want to recognize that Laura and Kevin and Nick have all been here longer than 10 years, though, so they've seen stuff. And they are wonderful leaders within their team and really got us through some difficult times that, a few years ago, and I'll leave it at that. But I'm very, very, very proud of them. They couldn't be any better. They're a very cohesive team. They're a very knowledgeable team, and I'm really proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. So Nancy, we'd like to have your team stay, and then after the next presentation, if you can all come down and take a group photo. That'd be great. Comments from Commissioners? And Steve, and then Emma.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
I want to thank you guys. Part of our effort as a government in the United States is to be open and transparent, and then we let the fighting occur among the politicians about where to put the money, and then working with our staff on where it exists. You do an outstanding job, and I believe we've had this reward, how many times now, Nancy? Like, literally, like, and so you guys being able to make sure that we can show where the money is allows us to have the policy discussions, talk to our folks in the community, and really live up to the transparency and accountability that we, that we push. So thank you so very much for all your work, and thank you, Nancy, for leading that effort.
Commissioner Pinter?
I also want to agree, the ability of our finance team and the accountants that make it all possible are essential for us to do any other function of government. We are all interdependent. The work that you do makes it possible for us to execute. I'm looking at Nick because he frequently consults on the Child Welfare Allocation Committee, so I have the most face time with Nick. But like, his ability to understand how these budgets interplay with each other is essential for us being able to advocate for funding that serves the children and families in our community. And I know that you all take that seriously, that's why you're in the finance team, but I can't let this moment pass without thanking you for what you do. You are the, you build the foundation that allows us to do the work to serve community, and you do it with integrity, and it's great to have these moments of recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Okay. Onto our next item under Awards and Presentations. The next recognition, we are excited to be turning our eyes to the West and shining a light on one of the cities here in Adams County. Our county is nearing its 125th anniversary since its official incorporation, and similarly, many of our municipalities and cornerstone organizations countywide are reaching significant milestones. We are so proud to help them celebrate and bring in their new era, next eras. Today, we will issue a proclamation recognizing the Greater Arvada Chamber of Commerce 100th Anniversary and applauding them for a century of service and legacy in support of businesses, organizations, local leaders, and overall the community of Arvada. So Commissioner Henson, can you please read the proclamation?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm happy to read the proclamation in recognition of 100 years of the Greater Arvada Chamber. Whereas on January 27th, 2025, the Arvada Chamber of Commerce announced its official rebrand to the Greater Arvada Chamber of Commerce to reflect its growth, evolution, and commitment to serving regional needs of the business and nonprofit community. And whereas this exciting milestone coincides with the Chamber's 100th Anniversary, marking a century of leadership, advocacy, and impact in the Arvada community and beyond. And whereas throughout the past century, the Greater Arvada Chamber has been a steadfast advocate for local businesses, adapting to the ever-changing landscape of the economy and community needs. And whereas the Greater Arvada Chamber is celebrating its 100 years with a year-long digital campaign that includes a historical timeline and stories of impact from businesses and community leaders. The campaign showcases the Chamber's consistent thread of impact around connection, advocacy, leadership, and resiliency. And whereas the Chamber's 100th Annual Dinner on February 28th, 2025 will celebrate and honor the past and champion today's business and community leaders. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams proclaims the recognition of the 100 years of the Greater Arvada Chamber.
Fantastic. Thank you, Commissioner. I'd also like to mention earlier this month that the Brighton Chamber of Commerce, they celebrated their 70th anniversary, and it was a fantastic gala that they put on. Okay, next on our agenda, any questions, comments for Arvada? Okay. Next item is public comments. Eric, had you have anyone signed up for public comment today?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Any elected official communications?
Not today.
Great, thank you, Board. Then I just need a motion for the consent calendar.
Motion, motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
There we go. I'm still frozen.
Commissioner Henson?
Yes.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio? Commissioner Baca?
Yes. Thank you, Board. So the next item is new business. I don't see anything for county manager. Nothing today. County attorney?
Good morning, Commissioners. I would ask that we go into executive session pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 246402 for a, for the purpose of discussing potential lease of county property.
So moved.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio? Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Henson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes. And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Board. So the next item on our agenda is land use. Does staff need a few minutes to? Oh, well, staff is setting up. If we can have the Finance Department team come down and take a photo with the board for your recognition. Okay, let's go ahead and reconvene the meeting for land use hearings. So the process for land use is staff will make a presentation. It'll come back to the board for questions. The applicant will have an opportunity to do a presentation or add any additional comments. It will come back to the board for questions. There'll be a public comment. So if there's anyone here wanting to speak to these items, that's when you'll be called up to the podium. If an applicant response is needed, it'll happen at that time, then back to the board for discussion and a motion. So with that, if you want to go ahead and begin, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brian Marin. I am one of the planners with the Community and Economic Development Department. This morning, the case in front of you is VAC 2024-2, Toxic and Fine Silver East 64 Avenue vacation. At this time, one of the adjacent property owners would like to request a continuance of 30 days to review potential concerns related to their aggregate construction operations due to the proximity to Kiowa Creek. Staff recommends that the Board of Commissioners continue this case until the April 8, 2025 agenda to address those concerns. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Questions from the Board? Was there anyone from the public that was here to speak to this item? Okay, not seeing any, then what is the pleasure of the Board to make a motion to continue to April 8?
I'll make a motion to that we continue. I don't have the case number in front of me. No, it's not. Case number VAC 2024-2, to be continued until the April 8, 2025 agenda.
Second. The motion passes five to zero. Then we have this second land use case, Excel Kestrel Interconnection Project.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Eagleson with Community and Economic Development Department, and I'll be presenting the Excel Kestrel Interconnection, case number RCU 2024-8. This request is for an areas and activities of state interest permit, or ASI, and this is to an extent, an existing transmission line, 1.3 miles, of which approximately a half mile of that is located in unincorporated Adams County. Also accompanying this is a development agreement that covers pre-construction requirements, construction operational standards, and maintenance of that transmission line. Here's a large aerial view of the impacted site. You can see outlined here, and then East Smith Road is directly adjacent to the north. I-70 is directly adjacent to the south, and then E-470 is here to the west, and Powell Hatton Road is further to the east. Here's a closer aerial view of the site. The site is currently vacant. It has some light industrial directly adjacent to the west, and then some oil and gas directly adjacent to the east. Again, I-70 to the south and East Smith Road to the north. And I'll show you a more detailed site plan in a moment, but the transmission line would be located north to south directly on the far western portion of this property. Current zoning for the property is Agriculture 3. The City of Aurora's jurisdiction again is located to the west. And then there's some I-2 and A-3 also to the east of the property. The future land use designation for this property and properties to the east is mixed-use commercial. For the operations that the applicant has provided, they stated that this will be, again, tapping into an existing XL energy-owned transmission line. This is along Smith Road. That would be providing service to a new data center campus on 80 acres that's located in northwest Aurora, which I'll show you a little bit more detail here in a moment. Again, this is an extension of approximately 1.3 miles, and a half mile of that is located on that impacted highlighted property that I mentioned. It would also consist of single pole overhead transmission lines that would vary in height from 95 to 125 feet. And then they're also finalizing their landowner agreement and easement with that impacted property owner. So here's a look, a site plan the applicant provided. This is of the preferred route. The applicant also provided two alternative routes, but this one is the least impactful to the surrounding property owners in this area and utilizes right-of-way as well. So again, it taps in on the, on East Smith Road here in the northern portion, and then runs along that western property boundary to the south, and then jogs a little bit to the west along I-70, and then eventually south to this larger highlighted, an orange portion here where the data center campus would be located, again, in the City of Aurora's jurisdiction. So there's also a development agreement that goes with this. Again, this covers multiple requirements such as pre-construction, compliance with referrals, also submittal of any construction plans as well as traffic control plans, operational standards, and then also ongoing operational standards, and then also ongoing maintenance of the transmission line. When looking at the criteria for approval for an ASI permit, there's a total of 25 criteria. I wasn't going to go through each of those, but just highlight a few of them. So we look to see that it's technically, that the project is technically and financially feasible, that it's not creating any sort of natural hazards, that it's consistent with a comprehensive plan, that there's no significant adverse effect on the property, properties nearby, and that this is the best alternative route available. Here's a couple photos of the site. This is looking from East Smith Road. Photo on the left is looking towards the south, kind of at that western boundary of the property where that transmission line would be located. And you can see some of the light industrial to the west. And the photo on the right is looking towards the west down East Smith Road. During the referral period, we notified property owners and occupants within a half mile of this site. Total of 36 notifications were sent. We did receive one comment from a nearby property owner, remaining neutral, and just mentioning that they would like to collaborate with XL Energy as their property develops in the future. And then no referral agencies had any objections during their referral period. This did go to Planning Commission on January 23, 2025. At that time, there was no public comment, and Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval by a vote of seven to zero. And with that, staff does believe that this request is consistent with the surrounding area, as well as the comprehensive plan, that it's consistent with our development standards and regulations, and also that this would be a benefit for this region with the increased service. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the areas and activities of state interest permit with 25 findings of fact, two conditions, and one note, as well as that associated development agreement. And here are those findings of fact. And then we do have the two conditions. The first is that the applicant would need to comply with those terms and conditions within that development agreement. And we also added a second condition here that reflects the language. It's also stated within the development agreement, but we wanted to have this as a condition as well, that prior to commencing the project, construction on that parcel that's impacted, that XL would submit copies of that requisite land right, those land rights necessary for the project construction, and that would be submitted to the Director of the Community and Economic Development. And then there's the one note, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Nick. Questions from the board for staff? Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. Is there any, is there any way to bury these lines, or do they have to be above ground?
Great question, and I know that the applicant is prepared to answer that question.
Okay, thank you. And also then, I see you noted in the future land use is going for mixed-use commercial, but there's oil and gas to the east of there. Is there any timeline of when that might be available to be developed for mixed use? Do you know what the timeline is on that oil and gas development?
Not to my knowledge. I'm not familiar with that site and the proposed timeline.
And I know it doesn't impact necessarily what we're deciding on today. That was more just a question, curiosity on my part. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, we'd like the applicant to come up if you can state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Corey Miller. My address is 1800 Larimer, Suite 400, Denver, Colorado, 80202. That's XL Energy's address. Control L. So thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Corey Miller, and I'm a siting in land rights agent with XL Energy. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you about our project in Adams County. I'm also joined by members of our project team, and we're all available to answer any questions that you may have about the project. The title of the project is stated on the front slide. It's the Kestrel 230 KV Interconnection Project, and it involves the construction of a new overhead line that will provide service to a new data center, as Mr. Eagle indicated, that is being constructed currently southeast of the intersection of E-470 and I-70 in the city of Aurora. That data center is being developed by a group known as Quality Technology Services, or QTS. They will serve a federal client, and they have significant electric load needs, so much so that they are developing a new substation on the southern end of their data center campus. The application that we've put forward is directly for the transmission line interconnection solely. It will provide an interconnection point to an existing transmission line that will then traverse down across I-70 into the city of Aurora, into that substation that they're developing on their campus. One thing I do want to note that we are a regulated utility, so any sort of request from the development community, whether it be for industrial uses, commercial uses, and/or local government uses, we have an obligation to provide service to those entities, and we are privileged to do so. This is a look at the map that was also shown by staff. It shows the route of the line from the data center campus. The substation is identified by this green layer here. It will then interconnect with an existing 230 kilovolt transmission line that we operate in Adams County. The portion of the line, as Nick indicated, is a half a mile long, and it is that portion that is surrounded by that heavy red checked line. It does enter into the city of Aurora when it jogs to the west in parallel to I-70 below the O'Reilly Building on the southeast corner of that light industrial campus. The transmission line itself will sit in a 100-foot wide right-of-way. That's 50 feet on either side of the transmission line infrastructure equipment that we will install at its center. The transmission line will consist of a series of steel monopoles and conductor wiring that will span between each pole. The height of each structure can grow from anywhere between 80 and 130 feet. The highest structures that we will need to design will be those that parallel the I-70 right-of-way. It's a relatively wide distance that we have to span. We cannot locate any poles within the I-70 right-of-way, and we have to make sure that a certain height is maintained above the roadway per Federal Highway Authority regulations. All the poles themselves are also designed to the National Electric Safety Code, as well as Excel standards, which are based off of the National Electric Safety Code and those federal regulations. However, because the line is only approximately 1.3 miles long, we're only looking to install approximately 10 poles. One of the most important processes that we undertake when designing and locating a interconnection line like this is to perform a routing study. We did submit the full routing study in the application package, which provides a lot of detail as to what sort of constraints and opportunities we evaluate as part of that process, but I will go into some details briefly. The first thing that we have to do is establish a study area, which you see represented by the heavy check black line on this slide. The study area has to include, obviously, the property that we need to serve, but also points of interconnection. So something like an existing transmission line or a substation. And there were a few options as far as this study area is concerned. Once we have the study area determined, we then need to begin and collect data of opportunities and constraints. This is the process specifically that will determine where we can identify a route as best fit for our transmission lines. So examples of opportunities and constraints, obviously, we want to avoid impact to residential development. Example of an opportunity would be locating along other linear infrastructure, so something like a roadway, an interstate, an existing railroad, that kind of thing. This is an example of the route alternatives that we did evaluate, as well as some of the constraints that we identified within our study area. So there is a significant presence of residential development to the southern end of the study area. There is open space directly adjacent to the data center campus. However, it is zoned for future residential development. There's also a proposed future interchange that is planned along the I-70 corridor. We did also evaluate going to the west over the E-470 interchange, but anytime you have intersection of two major roadways like that, we can't guarantee that the line wouldn't have to move, fly ramps change, the road expands, that kind of thing. We did also provide a public outreach and engagement process. We had several opportunities for the public to weigh in on the project. We maintained a dedicated project website, a phone line, and an email inbox for them to provide comments. We also held a public open house back in 2022 in October. Most of the attendees to that meeting were members of the development community, and a lot of the questions, which are actually on the next slide, dealt with, you know, what is the nature of our easements and our right-of-way agreements? Are they exclusive? Are they non-exclusive? That kind of thing. And actually, a lot of inquiry as to whether or not they could also tap into the substation that is prepared for the data center campus, but as I mentioned, that is exclusive to their use. But this is a look at our notification boundary. We did analyze the notification distances for Arapahoe County, Adams County, and the city of Aurora, and chose the notification boundary that was the longest from the area of impact, and that happened to be the city of Aurora at one half mile. And that purple shading shows you those properties that we did reach out to. However, we did make sure that we reached out to homeowners associations, as well as the mobile home community that is on the eastern side of Pohaton Drive or Pohaton Road. That's a summary of the questions that we received. Again, most of them were related to development community aspects of the project. Lastly, I just wanted to go over our schedule. We do have other permit, permitting that we do have to acquire in order for this transmission line interconnection to be developed. We're hoping to conclude that in the spring, hoping to be getting construction in the, sometime in the spring, April or late spring, and then have the line in service before the end of the year. The data center and the substation are currently under construction. They were permitted in the city of Aurora in 2022, and I believe that they're currently operating off of a temporary distribution system, so this would be the permanent solution. We do have a conditional use permit that we have to acquire from the city of Aurora. We actually have the hearing before the Planning Commission, who is the ultimate determining body for that application tomorrow night. And we are working with Union Pacific Railroad, who maintain right-of-way on the northernmost extent of the project's footprint, as well as CDOT. We've engaged with both of those entities. They're just looking to issue those permits closer to the onset of construction. This is just a summary of the Adams County permitting tasks that we have to proceed through in order to receive approval. We did meet with staff and Public Works. We are not within the county's MS4 boundary, so our understanding, as verified by Public Works, is that we will not need a grading permit aside from what is required by the state, which we are obtaining, and as well as any grading permits that might be required by the city of Aurora. But the development agreement does mention that we will provide those to county staff here at Adams County prior to construction for review and evaluation. There was a question as to whether or not we would need an inert fill permit if we were importing soils to the project site, but that's not our intention. All of the poles, most of them will be directly embedded into the ground. A machine will be brought in. They'll auger a hole approximately 40 feet deep. They'll set the pole in place, and then they'll backfill. These are the requirements for the areas and activities of state interest, or permit application. Again, we went into detail with our project application for these points, but we're happy to discuss those with you here. And that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about our project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go to questions to the board next, so. Any questions?
Yeah. Commissioner Henson? Can you please elaborate or just explain, maybe using different terms or simpler terms, why this cannot go underground or why it's not being proposed to be an underground line?
Well, there's a lot of considerations with undergrounding. It's something that's possible, but it's very, very expensive. It increases the cost of this project by upwards of 10 to 20%, 20% or 20 times, I should say. 10 to 20 times, not percent. My mistake. This is a customer-funded project, so they are fronting the bill for all of the infrastructure, and I believe that that would be too expensive for them to maintain. There's also a lot of regulations of boring underneath the Interstate 70 right-of-way, which isn't always approved. And the other constraints within the project area made it difficult in order to reach a point of interconnection through undergrounding. I will say that overhead lines are designed to modern standards, which do accommodate fire hardening, as well as high wind protections. It's why XL Energy has a wildfire mitigation plan with the state of Colorado, where we are evaluating all of our infrastructure to make sure that they can accommodate those. It's also easier to maintain. If an outage has to occur on the line, it's much easier to address one that is built overhead than one that is built underground. Those are some of the considerations that went into routing it above ground.
And when you get south of I-70, is it still going to be above, or above ground? And so it's all the way to the station?
All the way to the station. That's correct.
I had a quick question. On right-of-way, so we see utility right-of-ways, different right-of-ways come through. Was the owner compensated for this? And then what are the impacts to their property? Because they did ask specifically, it looked like it was during the planning session that XL collaborate with them, and I think it's the Cardo Gas.
CIG.
Yeah.
Colorado Interstate Gas, yeah. Yeah, we continue to collaborate with them. We are working towards an agreement. We do not have one yet, but we recognize that it is a condition of approval that before we break any ground on the site, that we provide you with that executed agreement. We, negotiations are ongoing, but yes, they are always compensated as part of that agreement for utilization of their property. We also permit agreements to be struck to utilize the area underneath our utility lines, depending on the nature of the use, but that's always something that we will come to the table with property owners to discuss.
Okay, thank you for that. Other questions from the board? Not right now. Thank you so much for your presentation.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any members of the public here to talk to this item specifically? Doesn't appear so. Any additional questions for the board, for staff, or the applicant? Not seeing any, so then we're to a motion on this item.
I'll make that motion. I move to approve the permit for RCU 24-8 with 25 findings of fact, two conditions, and one note, and the associated development agreement.
Second.
My screen is frozen.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Henson?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoratio? Commissioner Baca?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes five to zero. Thank you to the applicant for being here today and for staff's presentation. So with no additional items on the agenda this morning, the board is adjourned. Cannot get to my phone. We adjourned at 10:10 a.m. Thank you, Erica.